Welcome, everyone. It is 5:15 on Monday, July 12th of 2021. The Carroll City Council meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the June 28th meeting, approval of bills and claims. We have no licenses, nor do we have any permits this evening. And finally, the high school state baseball tournament concession concessions change funds is also on there. There's any discussion with regards to the consent agenda? I'll need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second? I have a second. There's no other discussion? We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Bays? Yes.
Seaman? Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item is the oral request of communications from the audience for items not on the agenda. Thirty-one present. See, we've got quite a few in our first full meeting. Nice. These online for anything? Not seeing anything. We'll move to ordinances. And our first ordinance this evening is the rezoning request of the north seventy-two feet of Lot 1 and the north seventy-two feet of the east ten feet of Lot 2, Block B, Seventh Street Edition to Carroll, Carroll County, Iowa. The second reading. And Mike, please.
Mayor and council, this is the second reading of this rezoning request for property at 711 Northwest Streets, rezoning from B2 General Business District to RV1 Business Residential Transitional District. This was reviewed at the last meeting on June 23rd. I guess if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, our recommendation is to approve the second reading of the rezoning request.
I haven't gotten any feedback or anything from anybody there yet, so. If there's no other questions, need a motion to approve the second reading to rezone the north seventy-two feet of Lot 1 and the north seventy-two feet of the east ten feet of Lot 2, Block B, Seventh Street Edition to Carroll, Carroll County, Iowa, from B2 General Business District to RV1 Residential Business Transitional District.
Salute.
Second. There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Bays?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item is the sanitary sewer service charges, second reading. And, yeah, that's right, Randy was going.
Randy's on vacation today, so I will do this one also. So this is the second reading of the sanitary sewer service charges. This was first reviewed at the June 28th City Council meeting, and the first reading was approved at that point. I would note that we did send this, we did send notice by email to the two significant industrial users. We received no comments from either of them at this point. So our recommendation would be to approve the second reading of the ordinance this evening. We have to answer any questions the council has this evening.
If there's no other questions or any further discussion, I'll need a motion to approve the second reading of the sanitary sewer service charge ordinance.
Salute.
There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bays?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is under resolutions, and it's the Community Development Block Grant Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Grant. And it is 5:21. This is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 5:21. And Laura, when you're ready, please.
Yes, I will let Carla Janney with Region 12 come forth and talk about the program.
You can come on right away. Just give us your name, and that's all. When you're ready to go? You can use the desk up there.
I'm Carla Janney with Region 12, and as you all know, you applied for the Community Development Block Grant in early 2019, and you have reached the 50% mark on that. So just a little recap of your program is Carroll originally received $210,500 of CBDG funds to provide rehabilitation assistance to five homeowners at or below 80% of the county AMI. Program success resulted in amendments approved by IEDA for additional funds and a sixth project, raising the amount of CBDG funds to $220,500. Assistance to the homeowners is in the form of a five-year forgivable loan and targets energy efficiency issues, life safety remediation, and exterior maintenance. Qualified homeowners throughout the target area within city limits are eligible for consideration. The City of Carroll program currently has six recipients located within the target area. Construction is complete on the first three projects. Two projects are under construction, and the final project is in the bidding process. We had a walk-through just this week with five contractors added. All projects will be complete well ahead of the project completion date of August 31st of 2022. Expenditures to date include $86,797 in rehabilitation, $18,367 in technical services, and $5,984 in administrative fees for a total of $111,148, equaling 50.4% of the total CBDG funds. We did not receive any comments at the office, and I don't believe that the city received any comments either. Do you have any questions about the program in general or its status or its future?
I have just one quick one. The forgivable loan part of this.
Correct.
What do they have to meet to do that? Just finish the project and prove that it's been done? Or how do they, how do they, they have to apply as soon to get it forgiven?
No. When the application, when the applicant is deemed eligible and the project goes out to receive construction bids, on the date that we sign a construction contract, that is the date that their forgivable loan starts for their affordability period, which is five years. As long as they keep that house as their primary residence for five years, the entire loan is forgiven. It comes up on our computer construction software that we run the reports each month, and we release the mortgages on behalf of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I'll follow.
Thanks, Carla. Are there any comments from the public, as this is a public hearing with regards to the CBDG grants for the owner occupied housing? Not seeing any. We will close the public, well, Clay, you just got here. Did you have any questions about it?
I am good, thank you.
Thank you, sir, before I close out. It is 5:25, and we'll close the public hearing. With that, I need a motion to approve the Administrative Services Agreement Amendment.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a couple of comments about?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. So the first one, the Administrative Services, well, both of these came about because of the additional funds that IEDA has awarded the city for a sixth project. The first one is for $500 for Region 12 Services to administer that sixth project. The other one, the sub-recipient agreement, we ran into some information today, or we found out some information today that this one we need to hold off on until we get some more information on it. So I would like to not take action on the sub-recipient agreement tonight, but just take action on the Administrative Services Agreement.
Just on the first one?
Yes, if possible. So does anybody have any questions about the Administrative Services? All this, the funding for these two agreements is coming from the grant, they just grant money that the state gave the city for this sixth project.
You'll probably, we'll need a motion to table that one then.
Yeah, we can do that, yes.
Since you've already gotten it here.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Laura? If not, now I will need a motion to approve the Administrative Services Agreement Number 1 with Region 12 for the Iowa Economic Development Authority Housing Grant Contract Number 19-HSG-002.
Salute.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Bays?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And then I'll need a motion to table the resolution approving the subsequent agreement amendment, number two.
Salute.
There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Bays?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. And the next item under resolutions is the Street Restoration 2021 Project. And Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On July 7th, the city received proposals for construction of the Street Restoration 2021 Project. We received, opened and tabulated them at that time. The city received two proposals, and we received one from Ten Point Construction Company, Inc. as the lowest responsive responsible bidder with a bid of $456,592.86. Based on the lowest proposal, the current project cost is estimated as follows. Design of $35,000, construction amount of $456,592.86, for a total project cost of $491,592.86. Funding for the roadway portion of the project is currently anticipated as follows. We'll have local option sales tax of $500,000, road use tax of $100,000, and storm utility of $100,000, for a total of $700,000 in roadway funding. Now, a portion of this project does include some sidewalk along Timberline Road and Main Street. That will be funded separately, likely from local option sales tax, and the council will make a decision on ultimately what that funding source is later. So the project schedule is anticipated, if tonight the project is awarded, that construction completion would be by November 15th of this year. So staff's recommendation is the mayor and council consider and pass and approve a resolution awarding the contract for the Street Restoration 2021 Project to Ten Point Construction Company, Inc. at their bid price of $456,592.86. But with that, we have to answer any questions the council has this evening.
I have a question on funding here. We've got $700,000 available, and we're running needs $500,000. Of these funds, how is that going to be handled? Obviously, we don't need $200,000.
It's a good question. So typically, we don't track when we have funding like that in excess on a project-by-project basis. But ultimately, what will happen is those funds, we set aside for road use and road improvements, so they'll be carried over for future years' use.
Okay, but that doesn't, my question is, is which one of these are you not going to touch? Are you going to use a portion of every one?
We'll use likely a portion of all of them. So for example, like the Storm Water Utility Fund, we will fund the Storm Water work first out of those dollars. If we don't, if we have funds in excess, they'll stay in the Storm Water Utility Fund. The local option sales tax and road use, those get earmarked for capital projects, so they'll just stay in the capital project fund. But they'll get mixed between the various funds we have available.
If you, and if you don't know, Mike, that's fine. I know Randy's not here, but for the sidewalk, when is that anticipated to come forward, and will we have to do a separate bid out from that?
No, it's part of this project. It's just, we will fund that separately.
It didn't say it specifically, but I just want to, okay. Any other questions for Mike? If not, I will need a motion to approve the resolution awarding the contract for the Street Restoration 2021 Project to Ten Point Construction Company at their bid price of $456,592.86.
Salute.
Second. There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Bays?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The third item under resolutions is the fiscal year 2021 year-end transfers. And Laura, when you're ready, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city had completed their fiscal year 21 year as of June 30th of 21, and part of the reporting process is to look at our financials and do our end-of-year transfer. So there's a number of reasons why we do transfers. There are state code requirements that tell us that there are certain revenues that must be deposited into a special revenue fund. And then from there, you can transfer it for whatever purpose, specific purpose that you have earmarked that money for. So that's a number of reasons. So that's a lot of the reasons why. And there's also, the city has chosen to attract or account for some expenditures all in one fund. And then there's another fund that's helping pay for it. For instance, we pay for all of our property liability insurance out of the general fund, but a portion of that relates to expenses that relate to the water and the wastewater operations. So we do a transfer out of those funds after we identify how much it costs for that fiscal year, out of those funds into the general fund to pay for their portion of it. So tonight is a listing of all of those transfers for the fiscal year 21. Also included is a comparison of, once those transfers are completed, what we anticipate our ending balance to be of all those different funds and then comparing to what we thought our reestimated balances were, how we thought we were going to end, what we had done our fiscal '22 budget. We reestimate our fiscal '21 ending balances. And then a description of why there were maybe some larger variances. Some of those reasons that there could be a difference would be that construction projects hadn't completed or had not progressed, maybe as what we had thought when we were putting together our budget, our next year's budget. So that's, and then sometimes we just end up getting a little bit more revenue in a certain area that we anticipated. For instance, road use tax, we've received quite a bit more this fiscal year than what we had reestimated. And we've underspent some areas, or there's some capital purchases, equipment purchases that we had not done as of the end of the fiscal year. So we'll be looking to spend those monies in fiscal '22. Does anybody have any questions about the transfers for our fiscal '21?
When is the start date, the calendar date for the road use tax revenue? July 1st to June 30th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's interesting that we got a lot more money during the COVID time for that.
I'm not exactly sure how they do their funding to us, like how they get the monies reported to them, and then when we get them. That I don't know for sure. Not like, I think I get where you're getting at. Like Hotel Motel, we get that on a quarterly basis, and that's based upon actual collections or actual tax paid by the guests at the hotels, and that's submitted to the state, and then we get those a couple months after the end of that quarter's close. Local option sales tax is an estimate throughout the year. I'm not 100% sure how they do the road use tax.
So the DOT had a memo out with COVID, because that was an area, and there was a lot of great concern, especially with fuel tax in particular. So there's a lot of different areas of road use tax. I mean, you have fuel tax, you have license plates. You also have vehicle sales. So there's a lot of different areas that road use tax funds come in. Obviously, with the COVID-19, there was a big hit for about six to eight weeks just with traffic and fuel use. But vehicle sales, they were actually initially, they were, they were declining, and they initially was, but then they seemed statewide, that sales really held compared to the year before. Those do come in, you know, it's based on actuals. They try to do estimates, but they do release them on a monthly basis, looking back on what is actually happening.
So we really don't know the cutoff date for them? April? We really don't know?
Yeah, I mean, there's a few months delay.
Okay, but what I'm getting at is it's surprising that so much more during the COVID period than normal.
Well, this doesn't show, and maybe you looked at previous years, but this wouldn't show like previous years.
Is there double question down below?
More than what we had anticipated. Yeah. So we would have done an estimate.
It doesn't say anticipated, okay.
Oh, I missed a word in there, sorry.
Okay, that's why I was throwing off my, okay, yeah.
It's a good point.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, and we made some estimates where we actually lowered road use tax at some point with a couple more different funds.
Yeah, so the 340,000 is greater than what we had reestimated. Yes, so thank you.
So my old theory might be worthless. Are there any other questions for Laura? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the fiscal year 2020, 2021 transfers.
Salute. Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Bays?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, that completes the resolutions. Our next topic is reports. And under reports, our first item is discussion on Rolling Hills South Fourth Edition, expanding and revising the Carroll Urban Revitalization Plan. And Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So staff, as you know, is working on amendments to the Carroll Urban Revitalization Plan after receiving direction from the City Council at the June 14th meeting. Based on that discussion, staff is drafting the plan to take the current incentive and really move that citywide. To complete the revised plan, staff needs some direction from staff, one related directly to the plan and one to a development agreement that we have outstanding. So first with the development agreement, the city entered into a development agreement with 704 Development Corp. related to the development of Rolling Hills South Fourth Edition. Now, this is a 12-unit, six-building project, so there are six duplex buildings in it. The development included an incentive for the infrastructure of the water, storm, sewer, and sewer and roads to serve the units. That infrastructure was approximately $250,000 that developer was going to pay. And per the development agreement, we were going to offer an incentive up to $72,000. Now, as part of that development agreement, there were a couple timelines that the developer needed to meet. First, they were to complete the infrastructure by June 1st of 2020. Now, the improvements were installed and completed, and they were accepted by accounts on March 9th of 2020. So they did meet that timeline. The 12 housing units were to be completed on or before March 1st of this year. At this point, three of the six buildings are under construction. However, none of the buildings are completed to date. For completing these improvements, then, the development agreement did provide a rebate of tax and rent finance funds for up to $72,000. Now, the funding was also being provided as a match for the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program. Now, under the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program, the total cost to build the units cannot exceed $215,000. At this point, it's not anticipated by the developer that he will able to keep the cost below the $250,000 threshold and may be required to forfeit the workforce housing tax credit that they were, or received from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Now, the developer has indicated that the units were not completed on time due to labor shortage and additionally increased housing costs due to the coronavirus pandemic. So the main question related to the current development agreement is, should the agreement be amended to provide additional time to complete the remaining housing units and waive the requirements that the units be eligible for the workforce housing tax credit in order to receive a $72,000 TIF rebate? It's really a policy direction, or policy amendment that we need direction from council on. The second area of discussion is related to revisions being made to the Carroll Urban Revitalization Plan itself. So if this development is included in the revised urban revitalization area and tax abatement is made available, there'd be less TIF funds to make the $72,000 TIF rebate payment. Now, staff has run, Performa has talked with the county assessor's office, and at this point, it would appear that there would be sufficient TIF revenue to pay the rebate in addition to providing tax abatement for the urban revitalization plan. So the question is, does council want to include the Rolling Hills South Fourth Edition in the revised urban revitalization area and make it eligible for tax abatement? So staff is working with our outside bonding council to complete this. We are getting very close to completing this. We do anticipate at this point that we'll present the plan on July 26th in order to set a public hearing. On the revised plan, we do anticipate at this point, if we do present it the next meeting, that that public hearing would be September 13th. So with that, staff is requesting that the mayor and council review, discuss, and consider directing staff on how to proceed on those two items. With that, we have to answer any questions the council has this evening.
Is there any recourse that the developer can take with that workforce housing tax credit?
So I know.
Without, those who need our, they can do that on their own, too?
Correct. So they've been in discussions with Iowa Economic Authority about the credit.
Okay.
And I know that there's been maybe some movement to make some changes, but I don't know ultimately if they're able to get it to the dollar amount that they need to make it work.
But we don't have, the council doesn't take anything with regards to that?
We don't.
What would be the advantage of putting it in the urban revitalization area?
So if you recall with urban revitalization areas, I mean, we're talking about two different things. You have tax event financing, urban revitalization. So typically, whenever you have taxation occurring, the first thing when you have these type of incentives is if it's being taxed, going through tax abatement and urban revitalization, those are fewer dollars coming in, and additionally, there's fewer dollars that would be eligible for TIF. So you've got to be careful how you structure these, that you don't abate the full value under the urban revitalization plan. That plan will offer a tax abatement on the first $75,000 for five years, new value being created. For the TIF, we'd actually collect the portion that's eligible for TIF, 100% of that, for up to 10 years. So you just have to make sure that if you're going to offer both, that you're going to collect enough in TIF dollars after you have abatement, so you have the dollars to make the rebate. In this case, it is a pay-as-you-go rebate. So if the dollars wouldn't come in, the developer would ultimately be the one that would lose out on those dollars. The city wouldn't have no obligation to pay above and beyond what we receive in TIF revenue, up to that $72,000.
In the past, this developer has usually been able to get his projects done on time. And obviously, you know, you say to the coronavirus is a problem, which it has been for a lot of things.
That's why I asked if they have to take that on with workforce, because that's where that would originate from, because that didn't come from us.
The timeline didn't come from us. I mean, that was in the development agreement, as well, we mutually agreed.
So we had set the timeline for that?
We did, but that was set back in 2019, obviously, way before coronavirus was an issue.
So would we have to take action down the road to extend that? Would that then make it, allow that developer to be eligible for that workforce thing, too?
Well, the workforce is kind of its own issue, because it's really a dollar amount issue. That program requires in rural areas like Carroll that the total property, or the total project cost cannot exceed $215,000 per unit. So the issue really there is, can you keep his cost below that dollar amount? So that's really a state issue.
Yeah.
So with the timeline issue, that's really a city council issue, if you want to extend those timelines or five.
Boy, I don't think anyone could ever foresee the cost increases that have been experienced by the building industry. Or the Blains. I could sure see a change coming in that $215,000 somewhere. But that doesn't help us today, does it?
What's the, what's the advantage of putting that property in the urban revitalization?
So the issue there is, the question that we've been talking about, we had a lot of discussion with council, is we were talking about excluding those areas that are in a TIF, residential TIF area. So we have two residential TIF areas in town. One of them was the old Green Stream Development, that never materialized and never went anywhere. So talking with the landlord, or they- So talking with the landowner, they basically said, let's just forego all that and put it in urban revitalization, so tax abatement's available for those properties. This would be the other, and I think the issue really is, do you want to make tax abatement available citywide, or do you want to exclude this neighborhood? And it does obviously put the developer in a unique situation where they would potentially not be able to offer tax abatement in their neighborhood, where other neighborhoods that are kind of competing would have tax abatement available. So that's really the question of, do you want to include it in urban revitalization district or not?
Explain again, you said the funds, I think that the funds are available, which you said they are.
Correct. So, you know, the first thing is, when you have urban revitalization, you know, that's your tax abatement, so we're going to be off the new value being created, the first seventy five thousand dollars for five years. Then we run a Performa to look at, is there sufficient funds remaining to pay that TIF obligation of the seventy two thousand? And the Performa, using very conservative numbers, does show that we have, would have sufficient dollars to make those payments.
If this was included in the urban?
Correct. So it's really a policy decision for the council of, do you want to make it eligible for tax abatement in addition to the TIF dollars that we're rebating back to the developer?
The tax abatement would probably be a, an advantage trying to get these things sold too.
Yeah, and then they would go to the new homeowner. The developer, the developer doesn't get the advantage of the tax abatement.
My question would be, this might be a little off track, but I know there's some new homes going up out north as well. Is that in the urban revitalization too, so those people get the same as this? I mean, I want to make sure if we're offering abatement to brand new places, that we're doing it for all.
Yep, so the urban revitalization rewrite, if you recall, today, the urban revitalization we have is generally from Highway seventy one, Eighteenth Street, Grant Road, south to the Raccoon. What we've talked about, council's directed us to, is to make it citywide. So yes, all those properties would be eligible for it. Now, the catch is going to be only those units, and only the construction occurs after the date the council passes the abatement. So if those units are completed fully prior to September thirteenth, or this portion of the building is completed prior to September thirteenth, would not be eligible for tax abatement, but then any new construction would be.
And the same would happen with this down here, so that all of this construction that's already done is not.
Correct. So there's like two of the buildings that are substantially completed, they would not be eligible for abatement. A third one is now under construction. It may get to fifty percent completion, so that fifty percent would not be eligible.
Well, so it's a percentage of it, would be a percentage of that.
If, only in a case where they start construction prior to us adopting.
Okay.
Good questions.
So if they, if they wait till after September thirteenth, then the whole thing would be?
If the council would adopt.
If we adopt that, okay. And I think some of our discussion has been moved in that direction anyway, so.
Correct.
So, I mean, would everybody be in agreement of having staff look at that from a full perspective? I guess is that what you're looking for?
So I think the two questions are, one, do you want to include this area in the urban revitalization area? And then the second question is, do you want us to begin drafting amendments to the development agreement to basically forego the workforce tax credit and then amend the timelines to accommodate their current situation? So that's really the two questions we need direction on.
So what's the timeline's going to be?
I haven't talked to the developer about that specifically. I would envision, and knowing kind of where they're at and where they're headed, to take what is the March first of twenty twenty one, what I would propose is to March one of twenty twenty three, so extend it out two years.
Okay. But if that helps to mitigate some of that workforce housing, because there's no way they're going to get something built for two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars anymore. That, that comes down from workforce development, right?
Iowa Economic Development Authority, yep.
Well, if they decide to change, then, why do we sit and wait until they change?
Yeah.
Honestly.
So then, it would be, it would be wise, I think, to keep this moving along for us to just take this, you know, burden off them with the work, work, workforce, workforce, yeah, workforce housing. So then, the developer would not need to continue with pursuing a state solution because you're working, you know, for that, correct?
Yeah, and they may still work for the state.
Oh, so they still.
They could do that.
Yeah.
The two wouldn't be tied together. You wouldn't have to have the state to get the local match, right?
Correct.
I have no issue with that. I'm providing our local dollars to the project, even if the state dollars don't come through. I don't think anybody else has eight thousand of that.
I think if we don't do what you're talking about, we're cherry picking them out of something.
Right.
Exactly.
It's a good investment.
Going reverse.
Again, so I don't know if I want it either for that reason.
So give you good direction.
Yeah, so I will go ahead and, we'll, the urban revitalization plan, when it's citywide, will be citywide, and then we'll begin working on the development agreement and amending that to basically work regardless of their status in the workforce, the housing tax credit program, and then we'll amend the timeline.
The timeline just may sound a little long, two years to finish this?
Well, I mean, you're looking at right now, it'd probably be next, I would guess, next spring that they'll start construction, the other three buildings. Can give them a year. Yeah.
I guess you can't build things in a month and, can't get the material in a month.
And the material, it's trying to be longer.
Well, once again, that project sits right outside my front window, and there's always work going on. It's just, got to be frustrating not to be able to get the supplies you need, the people you need to come do it, tie all the processes together.
And I quit bragging about the four pieces of plywood I have in my house.
Always tell people about those.
They are. So you got the direction where you need to go?
So thank you very much.
Yeah, with that brings up the second item in the reports is the Rezak, Rezak Anexation Proposal, and Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we want a discussion on a proposal from James and Amanda Rezak. They've submitted an annexation proposal, which is included in the packet for property at twenty-three, twenty-nine, six, Highway thirty. So this property was formerly the Reader's Implement Dealership. The property is adjacent to the Carroll Corporate Limits on the south side of Highway thirty, and the Rezaks are locating, relocating their Choice Auto Dealership from the three hundred and four hundred block of each six street to this location. And Laura, can you pull up this map, and I'll kind of, kind of describe some items? So for everyone's orientation, so this is the Pella Windows, Farnor Bachan property to the north, and then this would be the Rezak property here. This blue line that runs north and south is the current corporate limit, so they are adjacent to the city corporate limits in that location. So the Rezak proposal is for voluntary annexation with the condition that the city extend public sanitary sewer service to the property at the city's cost. Now, the current location of sanitary sewer is located on the northwest corner of the Pella Windows site, located there, and then would involve extending a public main to their west property line, to the corporate limits essentially. Now, the cost of that extension is approximately estimated at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, as we look at this, there's always other options of how we serve additional properties, and that extension would only serve the Rezak property, but we do know that there's other properties in the area. We know Farnor Bachan Property, for example, they own additional land east of their current building, that they've been, they've been looking for buyers for development purposes of that property. You could then extend from the Rezak, you could go to, for example, Industrial Bearing, that would serve the Farnor Bachan East property, would also serve additional properties to the south of Highway thirty. That cost to get to Industrial Bearing would be approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, looking even further out, and certainly we're not proposing that we would extend the sewer to this extent, but the entire watershed that this would be serving by a gravity feed would head all the way out just east of the church that is located on the south side of Highway thirty, east of town, and that extension would cost approximately nine hundred thousand dollars and would serve the entire watershed, which would be approximately a hundred and fifty acres of land. Just a couple points, you know, the Rezak property, obviously, to receive city sewer and water service, it does require you, under city ordinance ninety-five point six, to be within the corporate limits of the city of Carroll, unless they get a waiver from the Carroll City Council. As general, the council's not waived that requirement. We do have a policy regarding the extension of municipal public improvements, that's policy, city policy zero seven, zero eight, which was included in the packet. Just as a summary of it, the policy does provide guidance that the cost of extension of utilities ultimately be that of the property and not of the general tax or utility rate payers. Now, the policy also includes that the policy does not require the city to commit, that the policy does not require or commit the city of Carroll to any expenditure funds for a particular extension, and the decision will be made by the city council on an individual basis. Now, with kind of that policy in mind, if you look at Carroll City Code ninety-six point oh one, that includes languages on what is essentially a connection fee district, which would allow us to extend then the sewer to a particular property owner, and then set up what is considered a connection fee district, since this would extend and serve an area larger than just one property owner, it shouldn't be more on the idea on just that one property owner. So like, we're just happening, for example, back in like twenty fifteen, the council did establish a connection fee district in that area and extended sewer in cooperation with Carroll County Solid Waste, and then there are fees then, now as property owners connect to that sewer service, the city up fronted the cost, and then as connections are made, those are then rebated back to the city, where we collect them when those connections are made. So that would be one way that the city could extend sewer and then be paid by the Rezak property and other downstream properties, really to make it more affordable for everyone out in that area. So at this point, the request is for the council and mayor to review, discuss, and provide direction on how staff should respond to the Rezak annexation proposal. And certainly, there's a lot of different options out here, and we're happy to discuss those with the council this evening. So we have to answer any questions council has. Thank you.
Like you mentioned, a hundred and fifty acres on this map, what are you talking about? Just like Highway thirty or boths?
So it'd be north and south, generally. Yep, so generally, I mean, one of the things you have to realize is you have properties like, you know, extending, you know, to the Rezak property, well, you have Pella that's already served, you have Farnor that's already served, and even part of this Farnor property is already served, or committed to for truck parking. So really, this section of pipe really only serves one property owner. As you extend it, I mean, you have a number of property owners that are already built out. You could gain some additional land up in this area, you do have some land back here, and then you have this land in here. Now, the watershed is, is a little bit larger. Generally, what Randy did when computing the watershed district and what areas could be served in addition to the drainage area, really only looked coming a quarter section north and a quarter section south of Highway thirty, or quarter mile to save better.
Part of me sits and looks at that, and a hundred and fifty thousand is palatable at this point. Certainly the nine hundred thousand to go all the way out, but do we have anybody itching to get up from that far out?
No, and like I started, I said.
I don't know if we go to that extent.
Like my early comments, we're providing information to show you what the entire district would be. I don't think that is a long term or a short term issue. It's really a long term if, as you're looking at this and how we approach the larger questions.
But we do have some properties, like the Industrial Bearing, for another hundred thousand. Have they been contacted to, in this discussion at all?
So city staff has not contacted Industrial Bearing related to this exact discussion. There were discussions with Industrial Bearing's probably six to nine months ago that city staff had with them. At that point, their septic service had failed. Now, if you recall, McLaughlin, they, about a year ago, they, on their own accord, extended a service line, now that's different than a main, but they extended a service line essentially from their property west, and then it connects into our public main. And they also signed an irrevocable annexation agreement, so at the time that they would be contiguous with the city of Carroll, that then they would annex at that point. Industrial Bearing then requested the ability to connect to that service line. They were going to work with McLaughlin and pay them a certain value to connect to the service, but under our city ordinances, we do not permit, we only permit one user per service, and what we've ran into in the past is, long term, is these systems age and there's, they're under private ownership, what happens when they fail? And a lot of times, they look at the city, city, will you take this over? You know, the, the service line was built, I believe it's a two-inch service. It is actually a pressure-fed system, so it's not a gravity system. So there's just a lot of issues, unlike the city where we build these to a public standard. Yes, they always cost, but the last a hundred years, where the services, when they're not built to standards, they typically don't have a life span, and so do you want to take that risk on to the overall other rate users of the utility to make that a public main when it wasn't initially built to public standards?
So Industrial Bearing, when they had their trouble, what did they do?
So ultimately, good question. So ultimately, when, so they made the request to connect to that service, we denied it because it didn't meet our ordinance, and they then chose to upgrade their septic system. So they put a new septic system in, is my understanding.
Did they have the opportunity to, to be annexed, that they're not contiguous? That seems to me to be the difference here, is there?
Yep.
Yeah, this is very unfortunate timing.
Yeah.
If we'd have known now that this property would be.
Yeah, not, no, it's fault, but yeah, it's a different. No, I mean, we never, we did kind of, we did kind of talk about public mains and that, you know, what our expectations are, that property owners extend the main to their property, but obviously, that was a cost that, for a lot of these property owners, it's just, it's too much to overcome, and so they, they look for the least costly solution, which is generally septic, when you're a distance away from public mains. When public mains are readily available, that's the, usually the lower cost option.
That's kind of the same discussion going to McLaughlin also, was, we weren't contiguous to them either, correct?
And that's where they, you know, we came up with the option of, well, you can do an irreversible annexation agreement, so at some day, if we are contiguous, which likely in their case, what will be contiguous is more on the north side of Highway thirty. That's likely what will make them contiguous, then they would annex at that point.
Does it, does it make any sense at this point to reach out to IBS if they want annexation or not?
So I understand maybe one of our council members who isn't here did reach out to them, and they're not interested at this point, but staff is not.
I'd comment that.
I'm not interested, I'm not interested in spending the initial hundred thousand dollars when they just got a brand new system.
Right, I don't think they would. I, I just thought, I, you know, offer and see, because, I mean, it could reflect what we end up doing. If, if there's no interest, then I would just do the, get it going for the Rezak property and get going with it, so that they can move forward. That's where I'd be at. That's where I'd be at. Because they want to be annexed.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess the question is, I'm just hearing your comment there, is that something you want us to approach that this is according to their request at city cost, or do you want us to look at, like we've treated other properties in similar situations where we design it, come up with the actual cost for construction, and then designate kind of a watershed district, and then allocate a proportion of cost out to the entire watershed, and then Resac would be responsible for a portion of, not the full 150,000, but kind of there. Again, do you want the property to pay for, or do you want the rate payers of the sewer system to pay for? Because that's ultimately who would have to pay for it, if the city pays the cost.
Because only, where you're bringing on one property.
Correct. And I know there's always this, you know, some people, well, you're getting all this dollars for property taxes, but we, we treat our sewer system as an enterprise fund, it's its own business, and it cash flows its own, so general taxpayer dollars don't, doesn't go into the sewer system. So we would then take utility funds to pay for that extension, and ultimately, it would be the utility rate payers that would pay to extend it to the one property owner.
Is there, then they pay the service connection fee then?
Well, that'd be one of the questions, is do you want, do you want us to approach them and say, no, the city will, will pay for it, just like your request is, or do you want us to say, we understand you don't want to pay the whole 150,000, but we do need some contribution based on the area that your property is receiving benefit, based on the benefit you're receiving, and then kind of proportionally apply that out to the entire watershed, that 150,000, so everyone's kind of paying a proportion, not just Resac. Now, other property owners would only pay at the time that they actually connect.
Right.
So no one's going to pay for it upfront, so Industrial Bearing, today, yep, they don't want to be connected, we respect that, that's great, but when their system fails 40 years from now, they may say, you know what, instead of paying the 25, 50,000 to upgrade or replace our septic system, now we want to take advantage of that system that we're extending out to.
With that thought in mind, that's why I'm, I kind of shy away from having them do the whole thing, because we're going to end up seeing, we'll end up seeing some problem, some payback from it at some point in time.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially, yeah. Or the addition further down the road, if they do come in, there's further annexation properties across the way, so.
Mike, at what point is the fee established? This has to be bid according to the documents, and so is it after we know the true cost and accept the bid, and then the fee is calculated, and then how long, do the fees just go on with?
Yeah, so good, good question. What we would do is, once we bid it, we get the actual construction cost, because again, this is just an estimate that Randy came up with.
Right.
And then we would also take a, be more detailed look at the watershed district, and then we'd, we'd calculate the area that we think is likely served by the sewer, and then we would basically take that acres divided by the cost, and then that would be your connection fee district. Now, the other connection fee that we did down in Burgess, just for comparison, was basically five cents per square foot of total water area. So that's how that, that's how it got calculated, and that's how we would generally do it, is on a per-square-foot basis.
I, I personally think it would be worth it to pursue that, and just see, so they know upfront what we're thinking, and if that's our precedent, I think it's smart to be consistent that way.
Be consistent, yeah. Because I don't want to see someone bear the full cost of something that other people will eventually have the advantage of being able to use.
Absolutely.
It should be distributed evenly, yeah. Right.
Until they get to make the decision after you've done the cost.
Right, so they know what they're looking for.
Yeah, well, they're going to have to make a decision probably before we have the absolute final cost, but we can give them a good estimate of what that cost would be, and then as we're going through, you know, if we end up with a way-high bid price, you know, then we can reject the bids and make a decision at that point if we need to, but, but there'll be decision points that'll have to be made. And they may say, no, the deal, what, what our request is, is what our request is, we want you to extend it to be annexed, and then that makes it a pretty quick conversation, if that's the direction the council wants to go.
Yeah, I do the fee connection district, I think that, I think that's fair enough for what we need to do to get started.
So just to be clear, we're only, we're just going to the Resac property? Nothing happens to any property on further to the east?
To, to extend sewer, correct. Now, there is, there'll be a question on annexation, obviously. If the Resac property comes in, you know, the council would make a decision of, is it only the Resac property? Do they want to make regular boundaries out there, which is an option? That'll be decision made at the time that the annexation comes.
Which is later.
Which is later.
Not, not.
Not tonight.
Regular boundaries.
So any type of an annexation, there's, there's a couple of different annexation property processes you can go through. You can have strictly voluntary, you can have what is considered voluntary with non-consenting property owners, and then you can have involuntary annexation. So clearly, a voluntary annexation would be, in this case, Resac's only property owner asking for an annexation, we only annex them. A voluntary with non-consenting property owners, there's two provisions in that that says you either, they really want you, the city development board and the state who reviews annexation, well, first of all, you cannot create islands, which we wouldn't create an island. An island would be, basically, we're annexing around a piece of property that's still in the county. Regular boundaries, they don't want to create irregular boundaries. So in this case, they would say, we want you to square everything up, and so, and you can bring in up to 20% of land area as non-consenting, and it's still considered voluntary annexation. So in this case, the Resac property is greater than 20% than the APQ property that's there. So the council can elect to make a, a regular boundary and bring that property in. Generally, cities do try and look for regular boundaries, especially in areas where you have kind of existing development, and looking long-term about trying to create. If, if, I mean, one of the things I think the council stepped way back, as we extend sewer out there, I think one consideration of why do we do it? Well, you have some environmental concerns, you know, septic is getting more and more difficult, we've seen that with Holson Outdoor Power, where originally, prior to my time here, they approached the city, hey, we want sewer, well, the city policy is you have to be annexed, so they actually put their own septic system in. Well, that's a septic system fail. A lot of its sustain goals are changing, and they're getting more and more difficult to put in septic systems, especially in commercial sites. And so you have a lot of commercial properties out there that, long-term, may be wanting city septic, or city sewer. You've seen that with McLaughlin approaching the city. So I think as these systems fail, that may be, we may be their last resort in some cases. And so as you look at these, these properties, these existing properties, again, knowing that you can bring only up to 20% in a non-consenting fashion, the council may elect, because of the way it's developed out here, to bring these in as we move down, so that we're creating regular boundaries, and also preventing issues down the road of other non-consent, or other people who want to come in, really being prevented from coming in because of other non-consenting properties. So that, that's the issue, kind of just laying it out.
I figured, that was what I, on the part of, thank you.
Good question.
But ultimately, the, because this will still have, the annexation's still got to get approved by the state at the end of the day.
When it's a voluntary with non-consenting property.
Oh, okay.
So if it's a voluntary annexation, generally, just, it would just be a council review.
Okay.
Would the state force us to make it that non-voluntary regular annexation?
So I'm not aware of a case where the state's city development board has done that, I can do some research into that. I know the state with islands have come back and have, have thrown out annexation because they've created islands, so that, that has happened. I'm not aware, that's not saying that it hasn't happened, but I'm not aware where they come in and said, that's an irregular boundary, just go look at the Des Moines Metro, there's irregular boundaries all over the place there.
Right. I've got one question a little bit. The state has made us have high sewer, like copper and things like that. What about septic tanks? How are they monitored?
Well, I don't know all the rules. I do know when there's like ownership changes, that can become a trigger point. If, if there's a known failure, and you become aware of it, you know, the county's public health, fire, health, excuse me.
I guess what I'm getting at is, the state, our standards, why aren't they up?
They are.
They are.
They are.
They are going to the septic system.
I mean, and there was standard.
Well, that would make businesses want to be hooked up.
If, if, if you're looking at, well, again, I mean, we've seen that with Holson Outdoor Power, you know, they had a very expensive system already that, that was failing in five, six years, that they were being forced to put in either another very expensive system. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of, when you're facing those large septic costs, this really does become the least costest option. And yes, the state is changing rules all the time, and we see that with our sanitary sewer plan and the issues that we're facing.
Yeah, I know, we see it, I just didn't, I didn't notice.
They are.
I agree with Carolyn, I think not only us, but the, the Resacs should have the numbers and what I think.
I'd like to see that. The, the service connection fee district.
So head that down that direction, so we can make contact with them and just say this is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That's it for that item.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. The final item in the reports is the bid opening results, the compact utility tractor, and Jack, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. July 7th, two bids were received at the time of the bid opening. The pre-bid estimate was 28,000. The lowest bid was from Bamwell Equipment, 25,900. We were trading in, we would trade in our current New Holland 3415 tractor, has approximately 36,000, 3,600 hours, and it's due to be traded in. This is used all the time in the parks, wood chips, the dirt when we move dirt around at the baseball softball fields, used all the time. So it's a piece of machinery we really need to upgrade and, and get new. Want to answer any questions?
Or the counselor, do I need to stay silent on this, as a, my company did not bid, or what do you recommend for me?
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. You're not, you're not for a swing vote.
Just wanted to double check.
Right.
Any other questions for Jack? If not, I'll look for motion to approve the bid from Bamwell Equipment, Aduro, Iowa, for the bid price of 25,900 and 96 cents for the compact utility tractor.
So move.
Second. There's a motion in the second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Questioner?
Yes.
Dirt?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, I don't think we had any reports. I, the state baseball tournament is coming, I, maybe Michael might want to touch on that too, but I think that they've been seeing some issues of them trying to get volunteers, so if anybody's got some time to spend, I think that's a great program that they're bringing back here to Carroll, it's long overdue, and you have the opportunity to be able to get down there and trying to work something out of my schedule, see if I can get down there, but if you can do that, fine, thanks for your help. If not, any comments from the council? Comments from the city manager?
I'm not the senior.
If not, I'll look for motion to adjourn.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second. There's a motion in the second, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Hey?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirt?
Yes.
Damon?